If everybody has their agenda, we'll try to stick to that tonight. But first, uh, question of alternates. It looks like Diane and Kate are both in the same... Well, actually, Tucker, so.
Mm-hmm. Oh, here's Kate.
Oh, there's Kate. So Tucker and Diane are not here, but Josh and Dagny are. So you two are in, unless one of those folks shows up and then, uh, we'll deal with her. I'm not sure that we're voting.
I don't have any votes for you tonight.
For me?
I don't have any votes for you.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, I don't know.
Necessarily.
Yeah, okay. And, uh, okay, let's settle the appointment of alternates. Now, on approval of the minutes of the meeting of June sixteenth, it wasn't a long meeting, but it was an important one, like all. I had a chance to read these and I had a question, but I don't have any corrections to propose. Why doesn't... And does anybody else have specific corrections they want to suggest? Or additions to the minutes of June sixteenth?
Yeah, I see on the minutes, I'm listed as both present and absent.
Oh, sorry.
I was late, so you probably put me as absent and then when I showed up added me as present.
But the minutes are clear that you arrived late.
Yeah, yeah, I would say that, but, okay.
So.
Arvin. Shall we call you present?
Um, the one question I had and maybe you can give the, you know, answer off the top of your head, George. There's reference to the, uh, the new pathway, um, across the bridge to here, the three fifteen bridge, uh, to the other side of, you know, the beginning of the trail that's installed, it was Adam's proposal. But there's reference to that as three thousand square feet.
It's not square feet, it's linear feet length.
Yeah. And it's in there twice, it's linear, it's this.
The length of the trail?
Well, the length of the trail, three thousand is something like a half a mile.
Yeah, you could see it right under.
Oh, yeah.
Just what he's saying, the way it's turned.
So it's not three thousand.
It's linear feet.
Yeah, no.
Linear feet, Dagny's right.
Right, it should be labeled in it later.
It should be.
Outside.
It should be. Sorry, we didn't catch that.
I should just walk.
I didn't know if I signed this.
I think I wrote it.
I'm kidding, please don't make me being dramatic.
Right, so, uh, does somebody wanna make a motion? Okay, I'll move there, we approve the minutes of the June sixteen twenty twenty-five regular meeting as a meeting. In a second, please. Okay.
That's such a, that's such a condition of habit, square feet, that we deal with, so, we apologize.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second to approve the minutes with one change. So, um, if there's no other discussion, then we'll take a vote, all in favor or say aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, nay.
Oh, abstain.
The minutes are approved unanimously, with one abstention. Moving right along here. In the area of commission business, there is no public hearings tonight and, uh, can the... Oh, wait a second. Yeah, right. Under general commission business, we're gonna start the night with, um, Chairwoman Marjorie Winters, who's here with us today. This chairwoman is, as I think everybody knows, of the Conservation Commission and Inland Wetlands. And she's here tonight to talk about new regulations that have been created for, to answer the Dirks guys' dilemma. So, Marjorie, if you'd like to plunge in.
Thank you very much for having me here tonight. And I know this is something that people are working on as a zoning commission. It's something that comes up before our Conservation Commission. The lighting does affect our wetlands and it does affect our wildlife. So, um, I just wanted to share with you, I've been doing these presentations for Lights Out Connecticut, which is an organization that's trying to get communities and the public to turn off their lights at night for very good reasons, so. And it's because we have evolved to have those dark cycles of light and dark. I mean, we've been doing this for billions of years. I mean, it's in our DNA, um, it's in the DNA of all the wildlife and all the plants around us. And it affects all of our incredibly complex circadian rhythms. Um, you know, we, our melatonin cycles, you know, with the light, um, is when we start feeling tired at night, when it starts getting dark, but it affects the flowering of plants, when the animals hunt, how they find their mates, I mean, it just affects every living thing on earth. So, I do work at the Nature Center, Roaring Bird Nature Center, and I always love asking the children, what are the animals called that come out at night? And to a child, no matter how young they are, they will all say nocturnal. And then I ask them, well, what about the ones that come out during the day? What are they called? And they start looking at me very strangely, like there's a name for that. And, you know, even the adults start shuffling their feet, thinking, I don't know. The best answer I ever got from the children was normal. That's because that's what we do, so it's the way it should be. Of course, the term is diurnal. And, you know, there are night shift and day shift animals here, you see the owl and the hawk, but it also affects the insects too. We have a night shift of insects, we don't think about them because we don't see them. So all the emphasis on the bees and the butterflies, no one's talking about the moths and the beetles. But night is a habitat, seventy percent of our mammals are nocturnal. They are designed for the dark, um, they have eyes that glow in the dark, our eyes do not. It looks like little flashlights coming out of them, but that's because they have a mirrored surface on the back called a tapetum lucidum, um, so that it helps concentrate the low level light so they can see better. But they also have a highly developed sense of smell and hearing. But it's not just the mammals, there's a lot of other animals, sixty percent of our invertebrates come out at night. That's also very important. Unfortunately, now with all our lighting, we're not seeing light, we're seeing sky glow. And this is light that's coming from all the, it's sort of wasted light, not getting where we want it to go. Here is a gentleman walking across, the area is being lit, um, that's fine. But a lot of it's getting into the houses next door, it's getting reflected off this pavement back up to the clouds, and then the clouds will reflect it back, and that is called sky glow. The farther you get away from the city, um, the more lights you can see. But as you get towards the city, and, you know, we can look over towards Hartford and see that lovely glow in the sky. Ninety-nine percent of residents in the United States and Europe do not, well, they live under light polluted skies. And measured by satellites, the satellites are measuring that this is increasing, the light pollution's increasing by two percent per year. And it's probably more than that because they're not measuring the new LED lights, the new white lights, they don't get picked up by the satellites. So, it's even worse. And there are a lot of cities that just never see, and this isn't there. I love this, when an earthquake hit Los Angeles in nineteen ninety-four, um, it knocked out the power and sudden, you know, the lights were out and people started to see the Milky Way, which they hadn't seen. They called nine-one-one to report the strange cloud that was up in the sky. So we're getting disconnected from what we're supposed to see, this magnificent thing that we're supposed to see up in the, in the, in the sky. And of course, this has all happened since eighteen eighty, when the first electric light bulbs were invented. We had, you know, gas lights before, but they were few and far between, and it didn't really have the impact that the electric light bulb has had. So here's, here's how much it's increased, um, from, from the, from late nineteen fifties all the way up to this year. You can see that it's getting harder and harder to find those dark sky areas. We are, we are lighting up the night, um, and this is, you know, this is, you know, I used to live in Chicago, you fly into Chicago and you just see sodium lights everywhere, the lovely yellow glow of that. The, um, now you're seeing the blue-white light of the new LED lights, which are, yes, more energy efficient, but, um, they're giving off a different spectrum of light. So a lot of it comes from our roadways, um, some of the parking lots, I mean, you could do needlework in these parking lots, you could simply read a newspaper. Some of it's coming from, I love this, it's called vanity lighting. We light up our houses just in case you didn't see the house while you were awake during the day, we're gonna light it up at night, so if you happen to be driving around at three o'clock in the morning, you can still see that house. And then some of it comes from sports stadium, they're getting better about targeting their light though. And then there's light that just spills from our windows. I know we had this with, one of the applications came before us, they couldn't understand why we were asking about the light that was spilling from the windows, they said it's on the inside. No, it, it goes outside, glass is transparent. So, and we also light up the outside in our gardens, we like to look out there. I think it's reassuring for us to look outside and see that light, because that's normal for us. And I love these party lights that are on, I know there are no parties going on there because you can see there are no people there enjoying the party. So these lights are on all the time because it looks so festive, but it's, you know, it's rather harmful because artificial light at night has negative effects and deadly effects on all sorts of animals, whether they're amphibians, birds, mammals, insects, or plants, including us. So, um, light pollution affects insects in a variety of ways. They used to be incinerated by, um, our hot light bulbs, but now they're just, they, they, they are disoriented, they're looking for the moon, they're looking for the stars to find their way through the night. They're blinded, um, it's easier for the bats to pick them off if they're around a light. It, again, they can't find their mates, they can't find where to lay their eggs, it's just total disruption. And unfortunately, we are in the midst of a, sort of what they call an insect apocalypse. Insects are the little things that run the world, we can live without people on earth, but we cannot live without insects. And they are in sharp decline, here you can see the total global insect population decline over the past decade is forty-one percent. And there are a whole lot of reasons for that, but lighting is the one we're gonna talk about tonight. And the interesting thing, we don't pay enough attention to the nighttime insects, of which many are pollinators. The nocturnal pollinators play a very important role, not only, you know, pollinating wild, our, our native plants, but they also pollinate our crops. And where there is artificial lighting at night, it's been shown to reduce the overall pollinators. So moths have a bad reputation for, you know, eating our clothes or getting into our kitchen cupboards and eating your food, but there are, they are very important in, in, and here you see, um, the nocturnal visits to plants were reduced by sixty-two percent in areas with artificial light. So, here's the fascinating thing, there are only a hundred and twenty-one species of butterflies in Connecticut, but there are over two thousand species of moths. Now, nature's not making moths just because, what the heck, let's make another moth. Moths are incredibly important. Now, some of these moths are not pollinators, like the Luna moth and the Socropia moth, they don't even have a mouth part, they only live to mate and... But what's really important about our, our, um, our moths are their caterpillars. And why wouldn't, you know, why would we care about the caterpillars? Well, caterpillars happen to be the favorite food for baby birds. And there's a wonderful entomologist at the University of Delaware, Doug Talamey, who writes whole books about the importance of moth caterpillars. And he has grad students that can go out and count how many moths it takes to feed a baby bird. And they came up with the number between six thousand and ten thousand moths, moths to feed one nest of baby birds. So here, let's see, does this work? Yes, all right. So here you have mom, she's come with a caterpillar, and caterpillars are great, they don't have the long sticky legs, the wings, the hard exoskeleton. They can take that lovely little sausage of protein and put it into the mouth of the baby bird, but guess which one is gonna get that mouth? This is a, this is a sight no mother bird wants to see, all these hungry baby birds. She's gonna take that caterpillar and put it in the biggest mouth. And then that one's gonna go to sleep, um, close up its mouth, dad will come back a few minutes later and put, put it in that one. And they'll work their way down until they get to that one. Unless that one wakes up first, and that one will get the caterpillar and that one won't. So if there aren't enough caterpillars to go around this, they're not gonna divide up the caterpillars, saying you had one, you had one. No, the biggest ones are gonna get the caterpillars. So unless you have enough caterpillars, you're not going to get birds. And then the birds are responsible for, um, keeping control over a lot of other insect pests later on in the year. So as you decrease the caterpillars, you also decrease the, uh, bird population. So you can see here the decrease of the invertebrates, that's the black line, and you can see as that decreases, so do the bird populations. So this is really important for our ecosystem. So wherever we have these lights, especially the bluish-white lamps, which are the new, the new ones rather than this old sodium lamps, um, the insects congregate and then they get eaten by the bats. It's also blinding for the bats, and if there is a light next to where the bats are roosting, the bats won't come out of their roost because they keep waiting for the sun to go down. So that's not good either. So, we talked a little bit about the old sodium lights versus the new LED lights which are being put up. And what, um, the scientists are finding, that the new LED lights give a lot of light across the spectrum, it's more like sunlight. And the more wavelengths that are, that are emitted, the greater the ecological disruption. So, um, there's a UK study that showed that the number of caterpillars decreased by one-half to one-third, um, the closer you got to these new LED lights, um, compared to the old sodium lamps. And this is, this is what the color means, it's measured in Kelvins. It's really tricky now to go and buy a light bulb, it used to be easier. Now, oh my gosh, the, you know, the choices are endless. But when you're looking for a light bulb now, you have to look for the Kelvin number. And that just tells you whether it's a warmer, if it's a lower Kelvin number, it means the light is warmer, it's more on the yellow and the orange side. And if it's cooler, um, it's on the blue-white light. And the, the six thousand is usually what they use in a jewelry store to make the diamonds extra sparkly. And the older I get, the more I like the, the yellow light because we look better under candlelight. The, the bright white light. So, here's the difference between the warm white and the cool white, you can see there's a lot of blue in that, and that's the blue that tells us in the morning that the sun is up and that affects our circadian rhythm. At night, we're always told not to use our laptops and, you know, our devices because of that blue light. It tells us it's still daylight. So it affects us and it affects wildlife as well. As a matter of fact, the American Metalist, Medical Association recommends against that blue-white light, especially in streetlights, the, uh, because it has really harmful effects to us. It disrupts our endocrine system, and it's, um, and it can lead to a lot of endocrine-related disease like obesity, depression, even breast cancer and more. So, it's, um, it's something that we should be paying attention for ourselves. It's also been found that birds that are in areas with this, you know, blue-white light, when they're exposed to artificial light at night, they're high, they incubate the West Nile virus for twice as long. So, that's another consideration. So, um, something, you know, it's not just the wildlife that we're talking about. But of course, the main, main reason for turning out the lights, um, for certain times of the year especially, is that most of our birds migrate at night. Every year, three billion birds pass overhead of us while we're sleeping. It's the biggest event that happens that we never know about. They're navigating by starlight and moonlight. Then they're, they're going from South America up to North America, this is the southern route, and they're going up to the boreal forest where there are lots of caterpillars in the spring. And half of the migration happens in less than three weeks in the spring and two months in the fall. So these are very critical times for keeping our lights out and turning it down. Light pollution is really deadly for birds. It attracts the birds and they circle around, they're confused, where is that light? Where are the navigations they're going? And then they circle around and they die of exhaustion. Because this is a time that's extremely stressful for them anyway, um, and they're using up their reserves. So, the, here's, here's a story, um, in two thousand seventeen, um, four hundred songbirds, songbirds, became disoriented because this, this building was keeping its lights on at night so that people could see how lovely that building was. And they'd found, then one day they found four hundred birds dead at the base of the building. They contacted the State Wildlife and Audubon, and they said, don't turn out your lights, and they haven't had that problem since. Easy fix. I used to live in Chicago, I used to drive by this every night on my way home, and in, just a couple of years ago, um, a thousand birds died crashing into the windows of this big glass convention center. Because the bright, the lights were on, and when, when they have a rainy night, it just really confuses the birds. So, it was the custodial staff that said, found out that there were, when the lights were out at the convention center, there were fewer birds on the ground. So they looked at that and said, well, what if we turn off half the lights, at least during the migration season? And then they found out they could reduce the mortality of the birds by sixty percent. And it decreased, especially in that critical time in the spring. It decreased, you know, the, the death rate was down eleven times, and the, the fall season is a little bit longer. So this is something that Lights Out Connecticut, which is a group that's advocating for turning out the lights at night, actually took to the state Capitol, um, to the legislators and said, look, why don't we turn off the lights for all the state buildings from eleven PM to six AM? Especially during these critical times, it's the April to May, um, you know, the beginning of April, the end of May, and from mid-August to mid-November. Those are the really critical times when the birds are migrating, um, why don't we do that? And actually, the state legislator said, what a great idea, we could save a lot of money. And so they, they've decided to do it all year long. The only building that's lit up is the State Dome, because we won't know if it's there if it's not lit up. So, but there's another time of the year, um, firefly season. I don't know if any of you have been watching the fireflies out, um, they need the darkness. And if they don't have the darkness, they can't find their mates. So, it, you know, it would, you know, we extend that, you know, through that period of time, really in our own homes as well. Because even just a little flash of headlights or the light that's coming from your windows disrupts those fireflies, and their numbers are down in great numbers. But it also affects, you know, as inland wetland chairman, um, you know, the artificial light affects the animals in the wetlands. It reduces the number of mating calls the frogs can give off, and it keeps the salamanders from going out to forage, because if they're in the light, they're easily picked off by other animals. So what the scientists are learning is, is there's no level at which, um, lighting doesn't affect, whether it's from the genetic level, on the cellular level, to the individual behavior, to the populations or communities or ecosystems, there, it affects everything. So, this is the, the takeaway, there's no such thing as wildlife-friendly lighting. You can have better lighting, but the best lighting is no lighting at all. So, we still need lighting to get around, but there's when, ways and, you know, times to use it. So the, the three, um, the International Dark Sky Group, um, says, you know, use it only, only if and when it's needed and where it's needed, use those warmer colors and keep it directed to where you need it. And that's where, you know, that's, you know, this is the orientation, we used to have those lovely lights that lit up everything, but now, here's, you know, a good example of keeping it down low, just where we need it to do our walking. We don't really need to light up the treetops in order to walk along a sidewalk. We talked about the color, you can see here, we got all the insects right next to the, um, the white light, but there are no insects next to the yellow light, they're just not attracted to the yellow light. This is, you know, this is the range of Kelvins that we should be looking at, you know, that's three thousand and below. And the lighting companies are starting to make, you know, pay attention to the dark sky request to have these lower lighting. You can still see, so here's, here's a before and after this bright white light, which is, you know, very glaring. Our eyes, we actually have very good nocturnal vision, um, but once we see those bright lights shine into our eyes, it takes us about twenty minutes to half an hour to get our night vision back. Not so with the yellow lights, and you can see, you can still see your way along there, but you're not being blinded, the light's shielded, and it's just the right wavelength. Cities out west like Tucson, which used to attract tourists to come and see their dark skies and see the Milky Way, they are doing things with their streetlights, they are turning down the intensity, uh, which is measured in lumens. And so, you know, for later in the night, when there's hardly anyone out, they are turning it down to thirty percent brightness. And with the car lights and everything, people can still see, if no one's out there, it doesn't matter. That, you know, it's ridiculous keeping them so bright, so big cities are doing this. You know, and brighter does not mean safer, safer. I love this, that property crime occurs, especially vandalism and graffiti thrive at night with lighting. And that's because in order to do graffiti, you need to be able to see to do it. So, it doesn't really stop, um, those things, having the bright lights on. And also, that bright light that is on all the time, um, you know, will cause a lot of glare, so you can't see, this is the same picture, but here the glare is being blocked by the person's hand. There is a man standing there, but you don't see him because you, the viewer, are being blinded by that light. And it's really the change of lighting that, that makes you aware that something's in. If you have a, you know, there, there are things, how long, you know, you have to figure out how long the light has to be on. If people are usually coming on at home at a certain time of the day, you know, we have, we have the technology to put timers on things, um, does it really need to be on at three o'clock in the morning? But better yet, a motion sensor. And this is really where, from a safety point of view, it's that change from going from darkness and then suddenly the light clicks on, you are going to pay attention. The Chinese used to have, um, crickets as their watch guards, the cricket would chirp all night, but if someone came by, the cricket would stop, and that change would wake people up. Same thing Niagara Falls froze one year, and all the villagers in Niagara Falls came out because where was that sound that they were so used to hearing? It's the change, it's not, if you have the light on all the time, you will forget about it, but if the light is off and then it comes on, that's when you're safe, then that's when you know something is going on. That's when you pay attention. And, um, some areas, I know my sister lives in England, they turn off their streetlights at ten o'clock in the residential areas because they figure most people are home, the other people are coming home, they're using their cars, or they have flashlight when they go out, so, you know, and it saves a lot of money. And very low-tech things, this is things that we can do at home, we can close those curtains. We don't have to have a lot of technology, just close the curtains, or put a yellow light bulb into, um, your front porch. And again, I would encourage everyone to turn it off after, you know, ten o'clock, no one's gonna come. And then, you know, this is, this is it, this is the easiest problem to solve. It's just, you know, turn it off, we have the technology, we just have the will to, to use it. So, the Conservation Commission has, um, looked at the Connecticut Lights Out model regulations. We made a stab at making suggestions to the zoning commission, the possible regulations that you could put in. I know we had an application before us not that long ago, and we had no regulations to say. So we asked them, could you put in low Kelvin, and can you put in timers? Could you put in timers? The applicant had no problem, as long as they know what to do. So it's not a hard request, the technology is there. So, you know, you know, we're, we will be shortly giving you, um, that copy, I don't know, it's almost ready. We've, we've had it reviewed by various people, um, but something, I know this is on your docket from the P O C D, so look at that. So, here's, instead of looking at this, you know, with, you know, every year the lights are blinking out, wouldn't it be nice to be able to see, and I'm not sure how well it's shown up here, but, you know, to be able to go outside and see those magnificent stars. They are a part of our heritage, and people have been looking up the stars and getting all sorts of wonderful ideas, you know, stories from them, but it's something for our children. Children don't know what the Milky Way is, and they don't know what, where this, you know, they only see, every year they see fewer and fewer stars. So it's something that, you know, it's time has come, um, you know, there are a lot of groups working on this, you know, a lot of groups for writing, a lot of, you know, the Pollinator Pathway Group is, you know, anxious to get this done, the bird groups are very anxious to do that. And, you know, it'd be nice to see Simmsbury, Connecticut up there, um, on that too. So, I want to thank you for letting me discuss this important issue. And do you have any questions?
Have some towns already.
Yes, there are quite a few, um, and it's, it's a growing movement. So there are, you know, we looked at various towns in Connecticut to see what they're doing. Of course, the bigger towns even have a, um, lighting plan for the whole city. You know, and there are various places where they, you know, look at individual streetlights, is that streetlight needed? Is there another way of going about it? A lot of places are going from some of the streetlights to the reflectors, um, you know, just looking at, we have, we have lots of options now from what we had even twenty years ago. So, yes, a lot of cities and a lot of, I wouldn't say all of them, I've got a hundred and sixty-nine towns, and some of them are out in the country and some are big cities, but they are starting to look at this, and there are several cities that have passed lighting regulations.
So you have some samples.
Yeah, yeah.
To give you.
Yeah, and this is what also the Connecticut Dark Sky Group looked at all the different legislation in all, in other states as well as, as Connecticut, to see what, what was feasible and doable. And a lot of these would be, you know, new projects going forward. And then it would be an education on the town's part to try to educate the public, you know, just turn off the lights. I mean, you know, we have banners, you know, turn out your lights for, you know, bird migration, turn out your light for flyer flight season, there are lots of things we can do. So the Simmsbury Land Trust, I'm the president, outgoing president on the Simmsbury Land Trust, we've been doing presentations, we're looking to do more at the library and all the rest, but it's, 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 you know, keeping people aware that this is a, a thing. Thank you very much.
That was very important.
Thank you.
That was very informative, thank you.
So, uh, just, just, just to finish with, with Marjorie, and we, we thought, Marjorie's been working with Brittany, it's really been a, a work of the Conservation Commission. And we thought it'd be better to kind of frame the issue first with a, you know, the broader presentation. But we have language that's almost ready to, to show you and introduce to you. So it'd be, be a zoning ordinance, uh, text amendment regulation that introduces the fixtures and standards and those kinds of things. But based on the model ordinance and based on some of what other Connecticut and other kind of similar towns have done.
So that's been jointly developed with Marjorie and people from her commission. So that's been jointly developed with Marjorie and people from her commission?
Yes, yes.
All right. Moving right along here. The next item on our agenda is the Simsmore Square, uh, presentation. Terry, I know you're standing by and ready to go.
Terry, I do have those slides.
Okay.
Of course I do.
I know, I know, but you know what, I can't fault you.
But that, you can, however you wanna, you, you. However you wanna do it.
Marjorie got the clicker.
Good evening, Terri Anhan, L A D A P C, and we're here, um, representing Simsmore Square, also Nord Christiansen, and Rich Korea is also here. We're here, uh, just to get some reaction before we embark in a particular direction. So, um, Simsmore Square is a mixed land use project. It's been there for a long, long time, it's got lots of different kinds of uses, um, there's combinations of, um, commercial uses, multiple buildings, there's also a number of, um, existing, uh, one and two better, just mostly one.
Everything from four hundred square foot efficiency up to about maybe twenty five hundred square foot for that, everything.
Yeah, so it, and it it truly is a mixed land use location, okay, and this has been going on for a long time. Um, so, um, one of the things that we were looking at and it just seemed to, um, really sort of click, was the idea of an additional residential unit to be, a building to be located at Simsmore Square. If we can go to the, all right, that's our Simsmore Square, I have a.
Sims Square is here at the location, I did a little closer location.
Yeah, okay, so, so.
I'll go wherever you want.
Hot Meadow Street is located on the left of this. Um, the UPS store is that the first building and as you proceed back into the site, um, it it goes down, there's slope down there and we were looking at this particular area, um, to see what we could or or can't do sort of in that area, um.
Yes, it's kind of behind these buildings, if you think about it staring from Hot Meadow Street.
It's not where all the houses are with their little green, it's like the others.
Oh, no, it's it's a, it's on the other side and Hot Meadow Street is about twenty feet higher than where the first floor elevation for this building would be, okay? So, so, um, one of the things that we were looking at, uh, so here we have, Hot Meadow Street is on the bottom of the sheet, okay? Um, you've got the UPS store at five forty two. Um, and you go down, uh, towards the back, which is, uh, what's always been known as the Taylor Rental Building, for for those of you who've been around for a long time. Um, uh, and so we were proposing the idea of a thirty five unit, um, apartment building. It would be three stories on one side and one, and four stories on the lower side. So this, you know, they, we were looking for some representation, this is not solid, we're not here for a, you know, we just wanna get some initial reactions as to what, so this is the style that in general is consistent with the architecture for that area. Um, and so it would have some ins and outs, it would be the same sort of coloring. But you'd have, um, a corridor in the middle, you come in, this is the, what we would call the upper, the hot, the side that looks at Hot Meadow Street. Hot Meadow Street is approximately at the bottom of the third floor higher than where you're at. So you would really, from the street, all you would see would be that upper floor and the the roof, uh, essentially. And then on the other side, we would drop down a floor, just because I have to take up the grade anyway, doesn't make sense. Um, and that would be a half a half, so in other words, there's ten units per floor. When the bottom floor, the lower floor would just be five, those would mostly just be walkout directly. Um, and so we would have parking on the upper level and parking on the the lower level as well.
No underground parking?
No, no, surface parking, yep, surface parking.
So that building, that concept is the same as the other building.
Correct, that is exactly correct, yes, cuz it's, it's, it's more stories and then it steps down and there's all commercial uses down at the lower level on the Taylor Rental.
But that Taylor Rental Building has just two floors above that partial floor.
That, that's correct, it it's, it's only, it's, this is a floor higher, but.
So does, does another one have a gable roof too?
Yeah.
So the other one has apartments on the top floor?
Correct.
How many apartments are there?
There's, there's eight.
Eight.
And and that, the size of the proposed one is larger.
No, if you go back to the, go back to the site line.
If I'm, if I'm looking at here, there's a rectangle left.
Yeah, it's, it's almost the same.
It's similar.
So it's similar footprint.
Yeah, it's, it's the same, it's the same massing, correct.
Okay.
Yep, it's, it's about the same massing, it's a little longer, a little skinnier. You know, uh, by little, I mean like five feet, you know, not, not, not bigger, not bigger.
Okay.
Um, the, um, the regulations say that, um, uh, we would have to have two parking spaces per unit. So we can accommodate that, but right now what we have is, um, that whole, uh, complex has a, a special exception, go to sixty percent impervious surface. So some of it might have to be pervious pavement and I need to talk to, uh, Adam and the, the engineering group as to whether or not we would be allowed to do that, um, and still be considered not impervious surface. But there, there's some logistics that I have to figure out, yep.
There's some impervious type of parking?
There is, correct.
Which is like grass in between or stone between?
No, 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 that, that, that is pervious pavement, so, um, so it's, that means the water goes through.
Are you having some pervious?
Yeah, correct, correct, right now I'm proposing that, whether or not I can actually do that, that's, I gotta talk to the engineer.
Based on engineering and flow and drainage?
Yeah, no, I mean physically I can do it, but whether or not they classify it,
I see.
uh, uh, from a stormwater perspective, that's a conversation I haven't had yet, okay? I'm thinking stormwater rather than anything else, okay?
Uh, so if I could interrupt for a second, is your proposal that all of these are rental units?
Correct.
Yeah, would you develop or consider some, uh, ownership units?
Taking the words right out of my mouth, sorry.
Uh, right now, um, all of the, it, it, this is a multi-building, uh, single owner, um, uh, complex. So it really, ownership hasn't really come up at all. And and doing that as an ownership component, uh, just, it would make our lives a little bit more complicated. We might have to do, uh, lot line, you know, is there a lot line thing, there might, it it just might be something. I, I haven't really thought about, is there a reason for why that might be desirable?
Yes, we, um, just came up with the, uh, Hartford South Development, one of the concerns we had is that it was one hundred percent rental. And we looking for opportunities for residents in town to own, you know, property.
Oh, just from a philosophical perspective?
We know from a realistic, we need it.
Yeah, so it's, uh, you know, it is.
Would be a good opportunity, okay, alright.
So I don't know if that is, um, something that we could follow up on, but we'll, this is why we're here, to sort of get those comments.
Have you thought through the size of the units and price points?
But in general, they're, they're one bedroom units, that's as far as we've gotten. This is, this is very, very, very preliminary at this point, because one bedroom units, Nord has, how long is your waiting list?
I, I get calls daily, people look at, they, they don't wanna spend two to three thousand dollars a month for a one bedroom apartment.
Probably.
And I have, every day I get a call, I just need a little place.
In what price?
I don't need two thousand square feet, I don't need all these amenities, I need a place to sleep, a place that I can afford.
And that's kind of the niche that you currently.
What's the price point that you're offering?
Our, our most expensive apartment, we have roughly thirty units there. Our most expensive apartment at this point is seventeen hundred dollars a unit. Our least expensive is eight fifty, that's gonna go up drastically shortly because the guys move around, but.
That's why you get calls, because you're affordable, that's, you've always been that way.
Yeah, that's right, yep, this is, this is very much so a niche location.
Yeah, it's such a niche of ours, yeah.
But do you think you can meet that price point with new construction?
If we do it right.
It's a good answer.
If we do it right, you know.
Good answer, you know, no, I really feel like that, that was a really good thing to say because I think that we have an opportunity to be creative.
Mm-hmm.
And, um, we should take that opportunity.
And this, you know, we're talking about a location that is just physically absolutely perfect for this. It doesn't require significant amount of site work, so all of those things contribute to keeping those construction costs down, okay? And don't have to regrade the whole place, we already have existing water and sewer facilities, it's, it's ideal.
Tell me something else, with all of the land that's there, I mean, it's not like, it's a huge parcel that's, there is, there are pieces and stuff of, of land that's not developed now, that's grass or whatever. My question is whether you've also thought about whether that building could be bigger without being taller?
Well, um.
And what you would need in terms of accommodation from the engineering department or others, the number of parking places, is that something that could be maneuvered?
Well, the.
In order to make the building, you know, forty apartments or something, I don't know, I don't have a number, but the principle of larger building, but not taller.
Oh. Right, we, um, so every unit in general is about twenty five feet wide, okay? Cuz it's, they're, they're not, they're, they're, they're skinny, okay? Um, so, so every time you go this, you know, it's one more twenty five feet, I'd have to start to reconfigure the roads. It just is gonna increase costs much more than what we're proposing here. Uh, so, so it's, it's possible, it's physically possible, there is really no other spot on this property, um, unless we are to take another building down that would enable us to go significantly bigger. This is really sort of.
That's it.
The shoehorn, you know?
Hmm, so with that building, that's not gonna be visible from Route ten?
So, uh, I can't, I can never say that it won't be visible, but what it is, is there's a twenty foot grade change from where Hot Meadow Street is to the first floor. Can you get me the building back, please? That one, so, so thy first floor level is twenty feet lower than Hot Meadow Street. So when I look at Hot Meadow Street, I've gotta see through those existing front buildings and then I'm going to see that top floor with the roof. Mm-hmm. So that's about as visually.
The top floor being the third one up, right?
I'm sorry?
The top floor being the third one up and the roof, that's what I was just saying.
And, and a roof, right, correct.
That's if you look straight up, you couldn't see.
If you, if you got really, yeah, yep.
And if you weren't moving.
Yeah, at, at fifty miles an hour, you know.
And it's not gonna block the mountain.
No.
Thank you.
No, it, it, it's, uh, it, it just fit in here so perfectly with the existing topography and everything. It's, it's just, um, really, you know, uh, uh, it, it just makes sense, but the question really of the day is whether it makes sense to you guys. Um, because we, we won't pursue it if it, if it's, you know, it, it seems like it's gonna be a problematic, but we'd like to get some feedback.
If you could find a way to make them for sale?
Well, we'll have to look at the legal and logistics of that, um, cuz once people own something, they want more, you know, so.
Oh, yeah, but, but same thing with price.
Yeah.
You just say, this is what the price is, no, all the amenities are there, there's a gym right there, they can walk to the restaurants, they can walk to get bagels.
They have the bike paths.
Aside being for sale, my other concern would be parking, which you've already addressed.
Yeah, yep.
But I'm just verbalizing.
Mean, not enough or?
Yeah, like you said, if there are seventy, great, but we have.
Oh, no, we, we got, we, we, we meet the requirements.
Because of other, parking for other buildings?
No, oh, no, oh, no.
There's room there?
Yes.
For seventy?
Yeah, if you, it's.
Your site plan shows seventy.
Uh, my site plan shows seventy four, I think, right now.
Yeah, yeah, that's what you're saying.
Yep.
And, and there is some shared because a lot of those businesses are closed too, so it's, there should be plenty of parking.
I have a suggestion. Are we considering that meet like affordability standards on this project? And is it possible to satisfy the ownership issue by not, by having a land lease, you own the land, uh, but they could own a unit within?
Well, those are, the, the ownership component in something within a building like this where it's flat, it becomes what's known as co-op. Um, you know, that, that's a traditional thing.
Yes, co-op, well, that's a good concept.
However, it's a, it's a much, legally, we have to figure out how to make it work and also how to make the bank financing work.
So Eno Farms in the north end of town started as the co-op concept.
Yeah. Yep.
Which was to help make it affordable.
Yep.
And since that is one of the goals in our town, we're trying to achieve,
Mm-hmm.
there might be a creative way of doing that. And there are other developments like in Avon years ago, that started out as land lease and, yeah, changed, uh, good nature. But it's, you know, i- if you continue to own the land, you control what's on the land, right? So then, um, you know, has, in other words, somebody wants a chance to build equity and feel like they have some ownership, but it's not total ownership. But then you pass on the affordability to the next person who moves in because you own the land and control maybe a third of the value or whatever.
But you, you.
It, it's a complicated.
Thanks, I don't wanna get it.
We, we all, we all, uh, sort of can envision of how all these things work, I know what you're talking about for Eno Farms and how that was actually set up and everything.
Yes.
Um, the trans, affordability and the transition from one owner to the next owner is where typically all falls apart. We were involved in several projects, um, in, uh, Hartford, where they took down the projects and they went to, um, single family homes. The ownership of those homes reverted back to the housing authority every time it was sold so that they could control how the resale worked.
Resale.
It was a very complicated setup, they did a brilliant job at it and it really, really worked. We don't really have that setup here, so, yeah, we'll, we'll consider it, but I can't, I can't promise anything and I don't want you to convince yourself that that's the only way to go, yet.
No, I don't, I'm not suggesting the only way to go, I'm just saying there's creative ways of. But, but it is a small enough amount of units and it is mixed with other ownership opportunities within that area. So it doesn't worry me as much as some of these other ones where there's no ownership opportunities within the, like, development in general.
I just like the fact that, like I said, there's amenities right there.
Yeah.
You don't need to do anything, you don't have to add anything.
Owning within like an apartment building is a challenging one.
But it should be a condo, I mean, it would be a condo, yeah.
Condo, I mean, it's funny, condos all over.
So, um, I'm wondering if there's any opportunity particularly on the first floor to have some handicap accessible units?
Uh, one, especially the lower level, they're all direct walk-ins.
Yes. Yes.
They would be most likely to be completely handicap accessible. On the upper level, there will probably be an elevator in here, so technically, um, we are much closer to handicap accessibility than otherwise. Truly accessible units, I mean fully accessible units, there is a certain number that are required by code, uh, by building code, so, so that's true. But from a actual physical access components, for the most part, all of these units will be wheelchair access. Well, that's, I, I feeling pretty good about that.
What is the requirement of elevate, when do you need an elevator, for just for a three story?
Um.
Do you not need it if it's a two story building?
You don't actually need it for three, you don't need it for three.
Yeah.
You don't need it?
It wouldn't make any sense not to put an elevator in this building.
Correct.
And one of the things we did in the five forty building, those apartments in the top, is every door is three foot deep, three. So that takes the, the, except thirty six inch door versus a thirty two inch door, the cost is two dollars, five dollars, whatever it is.
Yeah.
It makes more sense to just put all thirty six inch doors in. It just keeps it simple.
I love that, thank you.
And the lower level walk-ins make it that even that much more appealing and, and you'll notice, so one of the things that happens is, um, I just, I'm balancing the sixty percent impervious coverage component and you'll see there's some sort of gritted out portions of the parking lot, those are the pervious pavement. I have to balance that with handicap accessibility and trying to get my number so that it works, cuz you need to go pavement to pavement to an accessible entry.
I see, yeah, right, right.
So, so I can't, uh, you know, it's, it's one of those things, so, uh, trying to balance how that would work out.
Thank you. But you would have entrance, you would have floor entrance on the back and the front.
Correct, well, no, no, not on the front.
Not on the front, so there's none facing Hot Meadow.
There, it's, correct, there's no, there's no direct doors to Hot Meadows.
Okay, sorry.
Um, I think there's, um, a couple of different sort of safety concerns associated with that, that you have to go into a lobby that is controlled.
God. God, on the sides.
Right, and then you go into a corridor and from there, so it just, I, I don't have, I was trying to avoid, again, my site, um, issues. I could push the building away to make that happen, but I'm, uh, right now it's a nice, easy slope that I'm coming down. I don't have to build a retaining wall or anything like that, but if I start to either push it forward or push it back to get that extra room,
Sure. Sure.
it's, it just, we're trying to make it as simple as possible.
Sure.
There's other issues, like even snow removal, if you do one entrance versus tenant.
Sure, yep.
There's other issues, like even smaller, if you do one entrance versus tenant uses, just again, keep keep it simple.
Yep.
Keep it simple, just let it work, you have to.
So are you saying one entrance on the lower or?
No, on the top, right there.
But why on the top?
On the top, there's actually five walk-ins plus a common entry on the lower level.
Okay, but you have parking lot on both sides.
Correct.
Lower, upper, so you wanna be able to enter
Yep.
the upper level. Somewhere.
Through the you yours are gonna be on an end or or the middle?
Yeah.
You have a little lobby.
Through the lot.
Through the lobby, it goes at the ends.
The lobby, its own end and the end.
Correct, yep. It's more efficient, so otherwise I have to make the building bigger.
Yeah. Right. Okay.
So that's that's how we came up with it.
Well, right.
Yeah.
But to you, you've entered, then there's gonna be a central court.
Correct.
With units on either side.
Correct. There's uh one other piece to this, which is um five forty. Let's get the number right.
Eight.
Eight, um which which is uh was added into Sims Moore Square, it was a standalone lot uh for quite a while. It was added into Sims Moore Square through the ownership component, uh it's currently a commercial um
It's a white structure.
You're right, it's current currently a commercial and at the moment, we're thinking of actually turning, and it was residential, then it was commercial, then it was resident. We're thinking of turning it back into a residential unit.
It's a lot thirty years ago and converted, adding in its part of the site plan and everything. At this point, there just isn't any call for commercial aid.
Especially on two stories.
Thought, and somebody last week. And that fell apart, um and at this point, I just assume make it a single-family residential.
So would you leave it like that or would you?
Exactly like that.
Okay, so
The lease change is gonna be gonna put a kitchen back into it.
Inside. Okay.
Which we got taken.
But would become a two-family?
No, well, we we originally proposed a two-family in in our documentation, we said a two-family, but at this point, it looks like it's shifting to a one-family.
Oh. Okay, okay. Got it.
It's it's not cost-effective to make it a two-family.
And that would be your single-family and then a rental?
Single-family, I imagine.
Now, this is a, for example, uh if you're standing on Hop Meadow Street, you look between the green and the white building.
Mm-hmm.
Right down in line with those the bill of those two cars.
Yep.
It's open space all the way to the back of the property.
Right.
And so anybody who's down at the new building is gonna be looking at Hop Meadow Street and vice versa, I mean
Well, we we can plant, I mean, we we'll now have room to to put new planting in at the top of that slope.
Nothing to worry.
That's how they
Yeah.
So is we we can do many, many things, yes.
Yeah, yeah.
A buffer?
Yes.
Yeah, I agree with that.
Yep, yeah, but that's that's why I put the building where I did, so that I still had room to be able to do it, but we haven't gotten that far.
No.
This is just a
Preliminary.
this is just preliminary ideas.
But the zoning, so the whole parcel for this building is in the B one, B two?
Correct, and so that that's is my next question. Okay, so at the moment, multifamily residential isn't allowed as its own thing within the the B one and the B two zones. Even though Taylor Rental went in as a mixed use, that was a different time, different place, all that good kind of stuff. So so the the question at the moment is I sort of have two ways in which to do this, right? Um we could make a text change in the B zones to let there be multifamily within the B zones. Or we can take this property, which is quite honestly a unique parcel and make it into like a PAD and make a zone that fits that particular parcel.
For all of Sims Moore Square?
For all of Sims Moore.
Okay.
Yep, because that that it's
Makes more sense.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Does this work with any of our revised zones?
Well, you ha- I mean, you have you have the PAD which exists already today, so you you could use, that could that would be one option.
Yes, yes.
There's 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 Your property abuts a PAD zone, doesn't it?
That's why.
PAD zone.
Go back to the zoning, man.
Are you talking how the these
Oh, it's how I think it's all A.
towing to the south?
According by Hazel Metal?
Oh.
Hazel Metal?
No, that's all B.
Yeah.
I saw that pink on there, I
It certainly meets the, I mean, it meets the um meets the foundation and the purpose and intent of a of a of a PAD zone.
Right.
Because because of the mixing of uses, for sure.
So So the option The options are to change
So you could
the building?
Change the the whole site?
Or no, no, the whole site.
Yeah, you'd have you'd you'd have to you'd have to have to draw some some map around the the site to incorporate the mixing of uses.
Yes.
Can't stand alone, can't have a pad by itself with just a residential use in it.
Right.
You mean a single building can't be a pad?
Yes, yeah, yeah, that's right.
Yeah, right, yeah, no, that's why you'd have to do the whole property.
Yeah.
But what implications is that for the rest of, cause there is a good amount of commercial here.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, but it uh PAD would enable us to have a mixed land use that would include all the commercial uses, restaurants, residential, just something that's very unique for this particular location.
Yeah, it's it's it would it would it would have zero effect on other uses in Sims Moore Square. It would only, it would enable the 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 mix, the additional mix, the new mix, the new addition of the residential, even though there's already essentially legal non-conforming residential there today.
Yeah. Yeah, that's a question. And if there was any future conversion of
Mm-hmm.
commercial to residential, right? So now that we've created this a pad.
Yep.
And this the the new building exists.
So they they would If you went with the pad, they would they would come in and with a revi- revision to the pad.
For any additional buildings.
We'd have to think about how how you you'd want to work that out, you know, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
That's why I'm asking.
Yeah, I mean, we'll we'll figure it out, I mean, I I think it what's more likely, I
Yeah.
There might be, I mean, think about what's happened at Sims Moore Square over the last forty years, right?
Mm-hmm.
So um we had a couple additions, um the Taylor Rental building burned down, it had to be put put up. Um uh there there have been a um uses that have moved around a little bit. Um you had um uh you had the conversion of the smaller buildings into residential uses, which already exist. So you don't have a wholesale significant change of things, you're gonna have uses move around from one building to next over time and you want the flexibility to be able to do that. That is harder to do right now under the current zonings.
That's all.
That's what's made it work all these years, it's the only thing that's made it.
Is the mix, yep.
Is the mix.
Yep.
Because with especially prior to COVID. Uh the commercial part was fine, the residential part was fine, um now nobody wants commercial, they don't they residential is the only part, I've been able to keep the commercial fall so far up until this last building at this point. It's just
So far, you've been able to do commercial and residential under the B one.
Well, they were existing.
B one allows
Pre pre-existing.
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 Got it.
Yeah, cause the current zoning is not what was.
Pre-existing.
But didn't B one always allow like an apartment above commercial?
So it'll it'll it it so the the B district allows for a a a a mixed use in a single structure at forty percent. And the forty percent has always been c- c- completely undoable because you have two floors.
Fifty percent, yeah.
How do you how do you, yeah, it needs to be fifty percent, frankly.
But there has to be relationship between the business and who's living there.
There has to be relationship. Usually, there does, right.
And you just pull people in off the street, they have to be connected to the business.
Mm-hmm.
And and the so so that is a limitation sort of long-term, um but and and we just we're just looking for flexibility.
Okay, so Sims Moore Square, do it, does it include the gymnastics training center or is that on a separate?
It's the site, it's that building and the gym own property and the buildings you own on, different owners, we don't own them.
Who knows, how about the tennis?
The tennis building, we own the property, we don't own the building.
So that's like a land lease.
Right.
Uh is that a scenario with the gymnastics and big sky, they own the land?
They own the land, they're Uh gymnastics owns their parking, the gym owns a very small portion of their parking, but some of their parking is shared.
It's it's more complicated than that, so it's
Mm-hmm.
But we think of it all as the same site, so it would affect everything.
But if you're doing PAD, are you including the gymnastics and them in this broader zone?
I would recommend it.
I appreciate.
Because the parking configuration is a general parking configuration for this whole
Yes.
project.
So it would be shared and it brings
Right, exactly, so so the I would envision it as a whole.
Makes sense. So you'd have
It's al- it's always been treated as one site.
What's the carve-out on that bottom, is that the
That's the guest station, that's what I figured.
That's a guess. Yeah, 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 they come up, yeah.
So this building would go on two lots?
Technically.
So Lotlines will be part of our 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 discussion and uh our and our 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 solution making.
Well, yeah, so somehow there are
Lotlines creates some challenges.
Except for your, right.
And and the lot
Well, the only thing is too, well, there's an awful lot of those buildings that right up there, there's Lotlines already.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So that's why I say it's always been treated as one site, and Lotlines have kind of been just
Right, cause our our survey doesn't even show the Lotlines. So, you know, our base survey.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, interesting.
Do it doesn't even show the, it doesn't show them, so so thi- this is from the assessors, you know, and the GIS information, but it, you know, has never been a
No. Surveyed.
It it well, if it's been surveyed, it just never showed up on the maps, don't you know, whether however that worked out, so the these, again, this is one of those things that we wanna i- if we do a PAD, which makes more sense, we can kind of clean all that stuff up. Makes more sense. Ultimately, I see, you know, all any large-scale uh commercial property of any kind has lots of those land lease issues, zero lot mine things. It's just a normal course of business and they change over time as to which was preferred and what the banks like and it it's just the most flexibility that you have, the better you're off.
Yeah, bank financing, they do wanna know these things.
Just a, I don't know where this, I'm just free whatever, I'm just speaking out loud now. So um we've reached that portion of the evening where I just speak out loud.
That's great.
Right, so in our um uh Simsbury Affordable Housing Committee, uh SHAPAC as we call it. Um we had a lot of discussions around um the housing authority and how to support them, bolster them, and I just thought it was sort of interesting that we you mentioned a housing authority in in Hartford and that relationship. I have no idea how that would work. But it just stuck in my mind as something that maybe
Ours isn't set up for that, yeah, I know. And and I would observe, and this is, this is a a personal observation on my end.
Ours doesn't handle money, like Yes.
That one of the hardest things about affordable housing is that we have no administrative mechanism.
Very true.
In which to set the price and let somebody else deal with how you make sure that people are eligible and how you keep it affordable. We don't have
Nor do we have the resources for that, for the the people
We don't we don't have any mechanism in which to do that.
But the housing authority couldn't expand its role?
That that in the past has been one of the things that the housing authorities in Connecticut traditionally did. They stopped doing that, especially in small towns, I would say thirty years ago, something like that. I mean, Eno Eno Farms was built, what, almost forty years ago?
In the nineties?
Yes.
So nineteen ninety-one.
So.
But 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 just just to be clear, the the this this project and and any project like this would be subject to to the new affordable housing requirement of ten percent. Ten percent of the units at eighty percent of the owner.
So thirty-five units, you need
Four units. Would be subject to that.
But But you currently have units that meet those requirements, but they're not considered
Right.
Technically, everything I've got is for it.
Right, right.
But
Right.
But all meetings would need to be de-restricted under uh
And Actually, keep going along, like they've been going along.
But it's not
The administration associated with clients.
de- restricted, and so it doesn't count toward our goal.
Yeah, and unfortunately
It's not
Yeah.
the administration necessary in order to meet those goals, in order to de-restrict, assign, all that kind of stuff.
Right.
Everyone that I know is looking for somebody to assign it to.
Yeah.
Okay?
Yeah, and as as you would need to under the under our
Yeah, and there isn't anybody out there to do that at the moment.
Nobody in the planning office.
No, it's gonna be a third party.
No, we have property manager.
There are some third parties we found that have been successful, luckily.
Yeah. Mm, okay, yeah. But that that's a but that, you know, that then complicates, so if you're talking about an ownership requirement, potentially, and an affordable compliant sometime.
Some more challenge.
Then you just complicated the crap out of the product.
Yeah.
So
Yeah.
It's complicated, but
Well, it has to make sense, the building
in order to get support of the commission, that you know, that goes a long way towards getting the support of the commission.
Yep. Correct.
Well, let me just, I think just so it's plain, I think that there's significant support for an apartment building down there, you know? So if you're concerned about that, I don't think thirty-five, you know, as I said, if there's a way to make it bigger without taller, I'd be interested in that too. But um you know, we hear the drumbeat all the time about we need more housing, we need more housing. And I and the price point that you're trying to get to, it makes sense to me. I think personally, the PAD, while there's complexity to make the transition, I think there's advantages to that to to take that on. And uh you know, if there needs to be a tweak here and there, I mean a tweak, not revolutionary, but you know, to some of the regulations to make something happen like that. Um in the old days, they just sort of didn't look at it or whatever, but I don't, there's no reason why we can't square up some of this stuff and and deal with it.
But and the pad, the pad allows you to do that, we
Yeah.
Right, exactly.
Essentially, it's it's essentially its own zoning.
When we created it, I wasn't a huge supporter of the version that that we're living with, but it's here and it's available and we should use it.
I think we would wanna work with you is what I was just saying.
Sure, okay, well, understood, my, so we appreciate your comments and um did you guys have anything else you wanna add?
Well, I guess my only question is five forty-eight.
Did anybody have any issues with that? I didn't I didn't see any issue.
Couldn't bring it back to a
To converting it to residential, yeah.
Residential.
I'd I'd like to do that, uh tenant that's in there is probably gonna be gone by September.
When you say five forty at that white house?
That's a little built-in, yeah, the little white house.
So so I I I
Mm-hmm.
I I I thought about this a little bit, Nord and I talked about it uh several weeks or a month ago. I don't, I I mean, I don't think it's it's a crazy idea to consider a special exception process for a conversion of an existing single-family home, whether it's business or I I think you could deal with that on its own with a text amendment that allows the con- a conversion process in a business district.
Sure. Yeah, but the only one that's there right now is that weird one that says that you have to be older than X and uh
By by special exception. Well, that's what I mean, you you'd have new language that says
Okay, uh so additional language for that, okay, all right.
Yeah, yeah.
So that doesn't need to be part of this.
I don't know if it does, I I
I don't think it does.
Could be part of the pad eventually, okay?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, sure, yes, and always included.
Yeah, yeah.
You can But not part of what this whole discussion was.
Maybe a special exception in the interim, so I don't have to wait six months or a year.
Yeah. I think that's fine.
See.
It it was an existing single-family home
I mean Yeah.
and he's turning it back to that use.
I I I think that there are locations where where this kind of thing makes sense, and I think the special exception process allows you to make that decision, right?
Well, and just to give an example, sorry, but right after this site, there was a commercial home that just sold as a residence.
Mm-hmm.
Right.
Yep.
Yep.
Literally.
Under completely understand, and that it it happens to be in a residential zone, right, right, right next door, right?
Yeah. Yeah. The remixed building?
On the street, so
And that was a residential.
Exactly.
It got made into an office, they've got
It's commercial.
Yep.
Like back to residential.
Yeah, that was a business in a residence.
Right, he re-zoned that property back, right?
Alright, yeah.
Well, we we literally did that, so we could do this.
Where this is a residential thing in a
I'm just saying, it's a residence.
Right. You you could, and so we would we we work with them, but the language together again soon.
Okay, all right, thank you, thank you very much, we'll we'll work on the next steps, well, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Good. Well, looking forward to having to come back, go take some stuff, something more.
Creative.
Oops. Um thank you. There's just one other thing I need to add, and I didn't, I don't know if
I do, I've just have a just have a couple of updates on quick little things that that are kind of random for I was
Yeah.
So the request for proposal to conduct a comprehensive update of the townwide zoning regulations is out on the street with solicitations uh due August first. Just as a heads up, that that'll be a big project, you know, next year.
Cool.
Let me say it again, so they
So we're gonna we're we 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 got, we have money, we have funding to review the zoning regulations, they have not been
Well, they're comprehensive.
They have not been updated or really reviewed and they have in fits and starts. Um you know, again, I don't I don't know how comprehensive a chain I a change I foresee, but I I there's just a lot of just little fixes to make it clear and better understanding and, you know, without, I think we go insane, we're gonna change all the setbacks in the R districts or anything like that. But there are just ways to make it better, and it's not better. Right now.
It just sounds a point of be mistaken, but this project is what's called the Simsbury Zoning Regulations. It's not considered Simsbury Form-Based Code
Right.
Ripken used to be, and it's not Simsbury Center Code, so
Yeah, but those by and large are are
It's general, yeah, it's our general graphic
are are decent documents that we can work with, I I I think centers might need a tweak or two on process, but it's not a part of this, I think it works. Uh no real update on Hartford South, I I contacted the attorney um last week, they are uh w- waiting for the Uh, no real update on Hartford South, but I, I contacted the attorney, um, last week. They are, uh, waiting for the judge to set a, 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 a date for argument in the, in the, in, in the early fall. On how that slipped, it was supposed to be the spring.
There was a.
That had slipped, so, we have not, I mean, the briefs are all in, and we, we simply haven't made arguments in front of the judge. Uh, you, you may have had questions about the Vessel project, it's kind of stalled, um, and the reason for, they have a foundation-only permit, they don't have a full, a full building permit yet for the entire site. Uh, the town of Simsbury, like several other towns in the state, are working with, uh, working with Vessel and their engineers and their architects on a, a, a number of, kind of a number of design issues. Now, they, they've proposed kind of a non-traditional building materials and some non-traditional methods that aren't necessarily covered by the National Building Code or the State Building Code. Um, they are, there, there is a, there's an avenue for proposing alternative design materials, um, but it hasn't been that easy to work with them, it's been a bit of a challenge, um. So our building official and building officials in other towns have said, hold it, it doesn't seem to meet building code, and then there's like a little bit of back and forth and a design and a, and a justification, and we've had, had the support of the state building official. And the state fire marshal has also raised some of those same concerns. Now, I do think we are going to resolve those eventually, but, but there is kind of a back and forth right now that you should know about, and that's the reason for them not moving forward right now.
So I have a question about that, because like, they obviously came forth, they showed things, they didn't seem to have it together when they presented their stuff. Like, it was pretty obvious that they hadn't gotten through all those details, and that it wasn't site-specific, and that it wasn't state-specific, and they sat there and said that it was. And now we've like a half-done project that sort of goes along, so is there things that we could do in the future to, okay, whatever, but started.
It's not half-done. Yeah. The foundation.
Is there things that we could do in the future to like, kind of require that they're actually showing us real things that work? And like, would be, like, I get that you would wanna get approval before you would go through all of that, but at the same time, it doesn't seem fair that, as a developer, that they could come in, basically act like they had a full thing. They're supposed to be like net zero, but I don't think they have any actual plans to put like solar panels on the top of this thing, they're like, is there any way to, sort of, a different way to hold developers accountable, so that when they come in, that they're not acting like this? Cause it's kind of, you could see it coming from a mile away.
Time is money, right? Time is money, and they're a developer, they, they have a foundation-only permit, and they don't have the rest of the building permit, so it would behoove them to, to meet the standards as, as quickly as possible.
Yeah. How they doing New London?
Otherwise, they're not gonna build it, they're not gonna.
Or Cheshire.
Because they have it up.
So they're not, they're not, they are, they are, they are suspended in Cheshire as well, they're, they are not occupied by Cheshire.
Yeah, see.
How do they get it from New London, they just made an exception and then do it?
That is a question for New London officials.
Okay. Got it, okay, sorry, I just, so anyway, I guess I just something in my head, I'm like, can we be more conscious of this so that we don't have, like, this kind of issue?
Yeah. You know, we're just dealing with, you know, the, the site planned is, is boxes and, you know, and, and squares, and we, we, we can't, we can't require full building plans as part of the site plan process, you just can't.
Yeah. Yeah, okay. Right, right.
Um, now, could we make a better, could we make a differently informed decision about issuing a foundation-only permit? Maybe.
Oh, I see what you're saying, like, maybe don't issue permits.
Just don't issue anything, you know, but, but it has, you know, it's, it is standard practice for, 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 for building departments to issue, issue foundationally to get, get the project moving and get, get it started.
Yeah, okay. That's reasonable. Get them started, okay. Right.
It's a customary friendly approach to, to develop.
Like, none of this is coming as a surprise, and it's just like, right.
Yes. Yes, we understand.
Is there an update on the North End?
Um. Yeah, I understand, so, so they did not receive the, the, the grant that they requ- we're talking about Wagner Ford. They did not receive the grant they were requesting for the, to, um, remediate the soils on site, but that's not stopping the project. As I understand it, Chipotle is going to move forward, they have a building permit. Um, but I do, I, I, I understand that perhaps the Starbucks is no longer moving forward. So it'll just be available.
With no work being out there now.
There's no work being done, uh, but I do, I understand that Chipotle is, 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 have the lease assigned, and that will move forward. Quickly, um, and they haven't, and there's no other permits issued yet.
It's the right direction, right?
Okay.
I have a question, um.
I see.
And. Okay. Um, I know that the Shepak recommendations were presented to the Board of Selectmen, it, was there any feedback that would be beneficial for this commission to?
We, we, actually, you can ask a sitting, uh, the, the, the sitting board of selectmen.
You want to spot or anything?
I, I, I think, I think we gave feedback, um, I don't think that, um, any, like, hard decisions were made or any, uh, it was kind of more informative for us.
Mm-hmm.
So we get to hear what's going on, and we didn't make any motions and move it forward.
Was the reception positive?
Yes, reception positive.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Call sent.
I have a question, is there any news about the proposed or the concept land for housing at down by where the movie theater is?
No, we have had no additional contact with that developer, we have not. Uh, my, my last, I have one more item, just, uh, the Tariffal Neighborhood Plan is, uh, will likely be adopted, uh, and approved by the Planning Commission tomorrow night.
I agree.
There are, um, some zoning recommendations in there, re- related to zoning changes for the village and, um, adopting some zoning regulations that, that make a little better sense for a place that has, uh, you know, a preponderance of smaller lot sizes and kind of a, a relook at the use list, among other things, so, um, I, I, I do think that that would behoove us to, to include that as part of our, you know, comprehensive zoning update.
That's great.
I think it makes sense, it's, it's, that's how to do it. You take the recommendation and you work on implementation.
Thanks, George.